Okay, I have, I have seven o'clock, so I am going to call the Board of Selectmen meeting to order for Tuesday evening, May 4th, 2021. This meeting is being held remotely, you would think I know this by heart by now, as an alternate means of public access pursuant to an order issued by the Governor of Massachusetts dated March 12th, 2020 suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law. You are hereby advised that this meeting and all communications during this meeting may be recorded by the Town of Hingham in accordance with the open meeting law. If any participant wishes to record this meeting, please notify the Chair at the start of the meeting in accordance with Massachusetts General Law Chapter 30A, Section 20F, so that the Chair may inform all other participants of said recording. If anyone is recording this meeting or intends to record any part of it, please identify yourself by raising your hand. Seeing none, members of the Board participating remotely this evening are myself, Mary Power, Joe Fisher, and Bill Ramsey. The first item of business is the approval of the minutes dated March 30th, 2021, and I would accept a motion.
I make a motion to approve the minutes dated March 30th, 2021.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, Joe?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
Thank you. I'm going to move on to the, I'm going to skip the employee recognition for a few minutes. I believe that we may have a few people joining us, so I'm going to move to the Article 11 Reserve Fund Transfer. We're joined this evening by our Town Accountant Sue Nickerson. We're also joined by Jean Montgomery, who's going to be talking to us about another financial matter a little later. Tom, could you just summarize? This is Article 11, the Reserve Fund Transfer. Perhaps you could just give an overview of the article and what the Board is being asked to consider.
Sure, thank you, Mary. So the way to think about this is a wise-burdened person once told me is you're moving money from your savings account to your checking account in order to, to make sure that our, we have the ability to, to pay the bills that we need to pay when they come in, should they come in. So at this time of year, as we generally evaluate our different accounts and make sure that we're on target to be able to fund the expenses where we anticipate incurring. And on occasion, we didn't have this come up last year, we did not need Article 11 last year, if you remember. Well, there was an Article 11, but it wasn't this Article 11 last year, too. So we were able to forego it, but this year we're anticipating some shortages in a number of key areas, and as a result, we want to plan for those, that eventuality, and have, have some, some available funds to pay for those expenses. And this year, that total, the total cost of those anticipated shortages is $588,884. They're anticipated to be spread across several categories. We have legal expenses, property and liability expenses, some stuff over at the fire department, workers' compensation, and town meeting.
Okay. Joe, any questions for Tom on Article 11?
No, I've reviewed it, I'm comfortable with it.
Bill, any questions on Article 11?
I have no questions on 11.
Yeah, and I would just mention that the Advisory Committee will also be taking up this article. I therefore make a motion for favorable action on Article 11.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, Joe?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
And then we have a Reserve Fund Transfer Request that is related to this, Tom?
Yep, so we also have a Reserve Fund Transfer Request in the amount of a total of $353,047. This will be for a transfer for the property and liability insurance. The reasons being that the premium was much higher than, I'm sorry, hold on just one second. So the, I'm sorry, the reasons for this transfer were a couple of things. One was the premium was much higher than budgeted due to the replacement value of our assets over, over the years, along with several high claims and some new vehicles, including things like a fire truck. But also to settle, fund a settlement with the insurance company regarding an insurance coverage dispute for a claim involving a personnel matter.
Okay. Joe, any questions for Tom on the Reserve Fund Transfer Request?
No, I've reviewed this and I'm comfortable with it.
As am I. Joe, would you like to make a motion?
Sure, I move to recommend a transfer from the Reserve Fund to property and liability insurance in the amount of $353,047.
Second, any further discussion? All those in favor, Joe?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
Bill?
I'm going to abstain, Mary, and I'd ask Heidi to note that in the, in the minutes.
So noted, thank you. Next item of business, again, another financial matter. This is the approval of the sale and issuance of bond anticipation notes. As I mentioned, we are joined by our Treasurer Collector Jean Montgomery, as well as Sue Nickerson. Tom, am I turning this to you, am I turning it to Jean?
Sure, so I can just, we will turn it over to Jean, and I will do my best not to butcher too much in the pre, in the ramp-up. Every year, we have a bonding, we issue a bond anticipation notes for short-term debt. So given that, I will turn it over to Jean to explain the fantastic news that we received when we did it this year. Jean, you're muted.
Jean, you're muted.
Thank you. Tom's right, this is, is good news. Let me give you a little background on, on the debt issuance itself, and then I'll share the good news with you. On Thursday, April 29th, we held a competitive sale for the issuance of $22,43, $43,652, so about $22 million. This is for a one-year note, it's a short-term borrowing. We did receive eight very competitive bids, so this was a competitive sale. The one-year note was awarded to TD Securities for a net interest cost, and this is the good news, of 0.159%. So that is a extremely low, that is one of the lowest rates we've, I think, ever had since I've been here. We've had a couple of low years back in maybe 2008, 2009, and this is right there with it. This is nearly a full percentage point down from last year's net interest cost on a short-term note as well, of half the value. Last year's net interest was one point, was 1%, 1.076. And just a little bit of background on net interest cost, because we often get questions on this. Net interest cost is calculated by adjusting the interest associated with a stated note coupon, and it's adjusted by the premium that's delivered at closing, which is above and, we, so we receive above and beyond the par amount of the note issuance. So we're borrowing $22,43,652, and we also will be receiving on the day of the closing a premium amount that you hear people talking about. Municipal bonds and notes are routinely issued at premium in order to establish a higher coupon rate on the security. This provides greater protection for investors to changes in the interest rate market going forward, and therefore greater marketability for our, for our notes. So we will be receiving on the day of the closing, this $22 million plus a premium of $440,873.04. So I'm only mentioning this because we often get questions as to, you know, what's the coupon rate on this? So the coupon rate on this note is 2%, but the actual cost to the town is net out from that bond premium, and we are only paying 0.159%. So this is really the difference between a coupon rate and a net interest cost rate is an underwriters mechanism. It's for the underwriters to resell these on the secondary market. So the net interest cost for the town to borrow $22 million for this year, this is the figure you're probably really waiting for. We're borrowing $22 million for $35,049.41, which is a remarkably small amount of money. So the coupon rate on our note is 2%. The full interest cost is $440,873.04, but we received a bond premium of $405,823.63. That's the money that we're getting sent in, in addition to our par from the TD Securities. So the net interest cost to the town is the $35,049.41, and that's, so with our net interest cost of 0.15%. So that may be a little confusing, but it's important to note the difference between a coupon rate and a net interest cost, when you sometimes will hear people talking about that. The number of bids we received shows a strong market support for the town's debt, and the winning bid from TD Securities is one of the lowest note rates the town has ever received. This is a multi-purpose borrowing to finance some new capital projects and to refinance several expenditures which are being paid down through a series of annual notes. The amounts and purposes are detailed on a handout that I gave to the Selectmen, and feel free to ask me questions on those, I won't go over all of that in the meeting tonight. So basically, that's the summary of the note issuance, and I have, as Treasurer, the Treasurer accepts the bid based on lowest net interest cost, so I had the easy part, I've already done that, and with your approval and acceptance as well, I will go forward and complete the sale, which is due to close later next week. So if you have any questions?
And Jean, I think Joe Fisher joined you last week for the sale?
He did.
So he's the good luck charm. So when we go to finance foster school and the public safety.
I'll be there.
We're gonna, Joe Fisher, Joe Fisher is going to be the man. So this is, this is not 1%, this is 0.1%.
Yes.
You know, again, we've talked in Inside Town Finances and throughout the budget process about the value of the AAA bond rating, being able to finance $22 million of debt and pay an interest cost of $35,000. I, I think we would all love to have those types of rates for all the different loans that we have. Joe, any, any questions, any comments that, that you'd like to add to Jean's presentation?
No, I, I mean, this is really a testament, Mary, to the work that you've done and the Selectmen prior to Bill and me have done to make sure that we have a good foundation, a good reputation in the bond market, so really, thank you. The interest rate, as you noted, is not 1%. I think it's calculated, it's something like less than 1/6 of 1%. So it's, it's really very good news for the town, and thanks to all who made this possible.
Bill, anything to add or any questions?
I just added, wonderful rate. Thank you, Jean, and your team for making this, making this possible.
Is there anyone in the public who has a question or wishes to make a comment before the, the Board votes to approve the sale of these bonds? Okay, Bill or Joe, this, this one's a pretty long one, so I'd say whoever reads this one's off the hook from reading any more motions tonight.
Okay. You want to go for it, Bill, or do you want me to do it?
Well, I'm happy to go for it. All right. Make motion to approve the sale of $22,43,652, 2% general obligation bond anticipation notes, also known as the notes, of the town dated May 12th, 2021, and payable May 12th, 2022 to TD Securities USA LLC at par in accrued interest, if any, plus a premium of $405,823.63. I make a further motion that in connection with the marketing and sale of the notes to preparation and distribution of a, of a notice of sale and a preliminary official statement dated April 20th, 2021, and a final official statement dated April 29th, 2021, each in such form as may be approved by the Town Treasurer, be and hereby are ratified, confirmed, approved, and adopted. Make a further motion that the Town Treasurer and the Board of Selectmen be and hereby are authorized to execute and deliver a significant events disclosure undertaking in compliance with SEC Rule 15C-12 in such form as may be approved by Bond Council to the town, which undertaken shall be incorporated by reference in the notes for the benefit of the holders of the notes from time to time. Make a further motion that we authorize and direct the Town Treasurer to establish post-insurance federal tax compliance procedures and continuing disclosure procedures in such forms as the Town Treasurer and Bond Council deem sufficient, or if such procedures are currently in place to review and update said procedures in order to monitor and maintain the tax-exempt status of the notes and to comply with relevant securities laws. I'd make a further motion that, that we hereby individually authorize the use of our respective facsimile signatures on the notes and direct Lock Lord LLP, AKA Bond Council, to affix a facsimile signature, is provided to Bond Council for this purpose, to the notes if necessary or convenient. I'd make a further motion that any certificates or documents related to the notes collectively, the documents, may be executed in several counterparts, each of which shall be regarded as an original and all of which shall constitute one and the same document. Delivery of an executed counterpart of a signature page to a document by electronic mail and a PDF file or by other electronic transmission shall be as effective as delivery, delivery of a manually executed counterpart signature page, the such document, and electronic signatures on any of the documents shall be deemed original signatures for the purposes of the documents and all matters relating thereto having the same legal effect as original signatures. And I'd make a further motion that each member of the Board of Selectmen, the Town Clerk and the Town Treasurer, be and are hereby authorized to take any and all such actions and execute and deliver such certificates, receipts, or other documents as may be determined by them, or any of them, to be necessary or convenient to carry into effect the provisions of the foregoing votes. Except for the town meetings called pursuant to General Law Chapter 39, Section 10, all proceedings essential to the issue of the notes and the authorization of the bonds and deliberations of a quorum relating thereto have been taken at a meeting or meetings open to the public. Notice of each such meeting was filed in my office and publicly posted in the time and manner set forth in the General Laws as amended and effect at the time of each such meeting, Chapter 30A, Section 18-25, and as further suspended, supplemented, amended, or modified by the executive order of the Governor of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, Chapter 30A, Section 20, dated March 12th, 2020, also known as the executive order, or if applicable in accordance with an alternative method of notice prescribed or approved by the Attorney General as set forth in 940 CMR 29.032, subsection B. No deliberations, decision, or vote in connection with the notes or bonds were taken in executive session, and no vote was taken by secret ballot, and the official record of each such meeting was made available to the public and remains available to the public as set forth in General Law Chapter 30A, Section 18-25, as further suspended, supplemented, amended, and modified by the executive order.
I'll second that.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, Joe?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
Jean and Sue, I want to thank you, and I just want to let the public know that, you know, a lot of times we think about issuing bonds and the bond rating when there's a significant event, you know, the building of a school, the purchase of the water company, but really, each year, because the town does maintain short-term debt, we typically have to go out into the capital markets each year, and the amount of time and the detail that is required to prepare many of the documents that Bill mentioned in his motion, including the notice of sale and the preliminary official statement and the official statement, requires a lot of care, a lot of diligence, a lot of information. There are questions to be answered, and Sue and Jean really do take the lead on, on doing all that for the town. And I just want to take this opportunity to publicly recognize both of your efforts in doing that. We talk a lot about our AAA bond rating being, you know, being affected by many different things, and certainly the two of you, and your credibility and your professionalism and the way that you do your job, you, you are the face of Hingham to the rating agencies, to the financial advisors, and so both of you are really instrumental in that AAA bond rating, in these wonderful interest rates we're getting, and I just want to extend the Board's appreciation to both of you for all the great work you do relative to all of, all of these bond sales. So thank you, Jean, and thank you, Sue.
Thank you.
Very much.
Okay, the next item of business on the agenda is the recognition of, of one of our employees. I'm going to ask Fire Chief Steve Murphy to just make a quick introduction as to, relative to this agenda item.
Thank you, Mary. So tonight, you guys are going to be recognizing Deputy Chief Bill Powers for his 35-plus years of service to the Town of Hingham and the Hingham Fire Department. When I think of Bill, there's a couple of things that kind of stick out, and I'm sure that this is going to, you know, sound the same for you guys. First is the fact that Bill is very, very well-known. It doesn't matter if you talk to anyone in town, you talk to anyone through the state or anything else, whether it's in the fire service or outside of the fire service, everyone knows Billy. And I also think that goes along with that, which is always very unique as well, is that it seems like everyone's related to Billy. Half of these people are his cousin that he knows or something else, and you talk to him in a story and you're like, oh yeah, that's so-and-so. So Billy is very well-known, and that's definitely going to be missed amongst our department. The second thing, and for those of you that do know Billy, you'll also know that Billy has a very unique ability to tell stories, and I know that's going to be missed around the fire station, that, you know, it's very frequent to walk into the building and see Billy sitting down and, you know, chatting with the staff or, you know, telling a story or anything, and there's many nicknames about that, but that is definitely something that I know will be missed by everyone. In all seriousness, I really want to thank Deputy Powers for his service. Like I said, he's been, you know, serving the town for 35-plus years, and during his career, he's pretty much been involved in every aspect of Hingham Fire Department. He's worked his way up through the ranks and probably, you know, one of the longest-serving shift commanders that I can think of. He worked as a shift commander and, you know, commanded the staff for 18 years and was involved in many, many calls throughout that time, including many fires or other significant incidents or anything else, and, you know, Billy's well-known and respected for that. He's also worked as a fire investigator for us, and most recently as the Deputy Chief of Operations, and his responsibility was overseeing all of the training and operations for our department. So again, I just want to congratulate and thank Deputy Powers for his service to the town, service to the residents, and wish him well on his next step in retirement and everything else.
Thank you, thank you, Chief, and thank you for being here this evening. We have a proclamation that we will read and, and for Deputy Powers. Before doing that, and I'm going to invite my colleagues to off, to also make any remarks, I would add to your list that Deputy Powers' institutional knowledge of every nook and cranny in Hingham is, is both remarkable and helpful. I had a friend who once had a medical emergency in Wampatuck State Park, and they weren't sure exactly where they were, and with a little bit of description, she said they were so fortunate that Bill Powers was on duty because he right away knew exactly where they were and was able to dispatch the necessary medical care during, during what was a little bit of a scary time. And I also personally experienced that because Bill took me on a tour of fire hydrants in Hingham. And, you know, one of the things that we all know with the purchase of the water system is that we have some catch-up work to do with fire hydrants, we have some different issues, and I, I learned so much in that couple hours that we rode around, and, and I want to assure Deputy Powers that as the town continues to own the water system, that we are chipping away at some of the issues and opportunities that, that he has pointed out, and, you know, certain streets I drive down right now and I see them in a different way as a result of, of, again, spending some time. Joe Fisher, any, anything to add?
So a couple of things. First, picking up on what Chief Steve Murphy said about everyone being related to the Deputy Chief. When I first got on the Board of Selectmen, I'm thinking, there was Mary Power and Bill Powers, I, somehow I thought there was a connection there. Everyone, everyone knows Bill Powers, it's just amazing. I, I have referred people who wanted something as simple as, what at least I thought was simple, as a, a burning permit for open burning. The Deputy Chief was the one who gave them the answers, and he literally is the face responding to fires across the town, whether at private residences or at schools. And my understanding, and I'm willing to be corrected here, is that Bill Powers is the last fighter firefighter on staff who started as a volunteer firefighter for the town many years ago. Is, do you know if that's right, Steve?
I believe Billy started right after the, or Billy started as a full-timer in 1986, the last qualified fighter, and Billy is on the call here as well, but I believe the last qualified fighter, which is again, pre-my time, was Barbara Fini. They retired a few months ago.
But just his service to the town is, it's, it's just so, it has been so important, and it's, he's going to be missed. Thank you.
Bill Ramsey?
I had the pleasure to serve with Bill on the Traffic Safety Committee for a couple of years, and I was just so impressed, Bill, with your knowledge of the fire departments, your, your knowledge of the town, and just your commitment to the town. And, and as you and I have talked about many times, I absolutely loved seeing your, your, the letters you would write to the Hingham Journal about fire safety, and I know that you kind of did that going above and beyond, but it was a tremendous service to our community, and I just wanted to wish you the best of luck in your retirement, and 35 years is, is so impressive and I'm so grateful for it, so thank you.
So at this point, it is my pleasure on behalf of the Board of Selectmen to hereby issue a proclamation for the exceptional service rendered by William A. Powers. Whereas you, William A. Powers, began your career serving the citizens of Hingham as a firefighter in 1986, moving up the ranks until your promotion to Deputy Fire Chief of Operations for the Town of Hingham in 2018, and whereas you ably served the Hingham Fire Department in many capacities, including as a firefighter, lieutenant, captain, shift commander, fire investigator, and deputy chief. And whereas members of the Hingham Fire Department and our community have benefited from your leadership, training, and mentorship of new generations of firefighters through the Powers University, and whereas you have been an integral member of the broader regional fire and emergency medical services community by contributing your time and expertise to many projects and committees to improve the emergency response profession, and whereas during a time of unprecedented crisis, you demonstrated extraordinary commitment and strength in guiding your team and continuing to provide critical services to members of our community throughout a global pandemic, and whereas over your 35 years of employment with the Hingham Fire Department, you have displayed the highest examples of character, integrity, and unselfish service. Now therefore we, Mary M. Power, Joseph M. Fisher, and William C. Ramsey, members of the Board of Selectmen of Hingham, proclaim our heartfelt gratitude and appreciation for all you have done on behalf of this great town, and wish you and your family much happiness as you begin this new chapter. and wish you and your family much happiness as you begin this new chapter in life. Signed this fourth day of May, two thousand and twenty-one, Mary M. Power, Joseph M. Fisher, and William C. Ramsey. Deputy Chief, I know that you're phoning in. I would invite you to unmute yourself. I think it's star six. If there was anything that, any any comments you wanted to make to members of the community? I know several have joined this evening for this and and to express their gratitude to you.
Mary, thank you so much.
You're very, you're very welcome. And we will, our office will make arrangements to get this proclamation over to you, but again, we thank you for joining us this evening. We thank you for your service and and a job very, very well done.
Thank you. It has been my pleasure.
Thanks again for being here tonight. The next item of business on the board's agenda is we have the approval of two employment agreements. Tom, I'm going to turn it over to you.
Great. Thank you very much, Mary. So for the last month or so, we've been working, the board has been working with myself. I've been working on with the Fire Chief and the Police Chief on identifying appropriate contracts going forward. So I believe that that's now in place and you should all have them. Both chiefs have have reviewed and have signed the the versions of the of the contracts that are before you for tonight.
Great. I'll, maybe Bill, we'll start with you. Any any questions or comments with respect to either of these contracts?
No, no questions. You know, a lot of work was put on into these by the boards and happy to have these two gentlemen serving in these roles.
Joe?
No questions. Really, I'm looking forward to continuing to work with Steve Murphy and David Jones. Their contributions to the town are are vital, and I think these contracts solidify their ongoing relationship with the town.
I would, I would fully endorse the comments of both of my colleagues. Members of the audience, if members of the public, if anyone has a question or wishes to make a comment with respect to the approval of employment agreements with Fire Chief Steve Murphy and Police Chief David Jones. Seeing none, I'd accept two motions.
I'll move to to sign the employment agreement with Fire Chief Steve Murphy.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, Joe?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
Mary, aye. And I will make a motion to sign the employment agreement with Police Chief David Jones.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, Joe?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
Mary, aye. Chief Murphy, Chief Jones, thank you very much. Tom, outstanding job on 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 these on these agreements.
Thank you very much, Mary. I just want, now that the contracts are finalized and everything is in place, I want to let the chiefs know how much I I am, I feel very blessed to be able to work with you two every day. You always have the town's best interests at heart, and and I'm really looking forward to yet another three-year window where we can, we can go out and do the town's business and as seriously and 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 deliberately as we do. So again, thank you very much for all that you do for the town, and and I really look forward to working with both of you.
Well, well said. The next item of business on the agenda is a fiscal year twenty-one financial update. Michelle, is this you?
It is, Mary. Thank you. So per the FY twenty-one financial management plan, we just had a forecast group meeting, and we wanted to give the board an update about how the town's financial picture looks as of the end of quarter three of FY twenty-one, which was March thirty-first. I won't bury the lead, so as of the end of quarter three, we're projecting about a one million dollar surplus, which means that we're managing to a balanced budget this year as expected. It also means that we may not end up using about one million dollars of the three-point-three million of unassigned fund balance that we had projected to need for this year. From a revenue perspective, as we may have reported in the last update, cuts to state aid thankfully didn't materialize this year. So we received about one-point-seven million more in state aid than we had originally projected, which is great news. However, we are seeing some dips in other revenue categories that have been impacted by the pandemic, especially meals tax, motor vehicle excise, investment income, and fines and forfeits. Overall, though, revenue is trending ahead about by about one million dollars, which is great. On the expenditure side, we took a lot of steps early on in the fiscal year to control cost, specifically by holding off on filling several vacancies, by deferring some capital projects until the financial picture became a bit more clear, and we've been scrutinizing purchases to a higher degree this year as well to make sure that we are spending appropriately. Expenditures overall are trending as expected, and we anticipate some sizable reimbursements through the CARES program as well as through FEMA, although FEMA reimbursements may take longer to come in. So far, we've submitted six different reimbursement requests through CARES, and we've received, those totaled about two-point-seven million. We've received about seven-hundred-and-thirty-six thousand to date, but also got word last week that two more of our our requests were just approved, so that's another nine-hundred thousand or so that should be coming in soon. A lot of work goes into those submissions, so I want to thank Sue Nickerson and her team, Heidi Gall and Sharon Perfetti in our office, and then John Ferris and Karen Toomey and others at the school department who put a lot of work into helping us submit these requests in a timely manner. Thank you.
Great. And Michelle, just in terms of the COVID reimbursements, how much of the the town's been allotted three-point-six million? We've submitted two-point-seven for reimbursements. Approximately, how much of the CARES Act funding has has gone to the schools and how much to the municipal services?
The majority of it has gone to the schools. Of the two-point-seven million submitted, I want to say a little bit under three-hundred thousand has been on the town side, and the and the rest of that's been on the school side.
Yep. And I would just remind the public that last year, when, you know, we had settled all of our expense budgets, and at this time last year, many communities around the Commonwealth were actually cutting expense budgets. They were furloughing and laying people off. We actually chose not to take that path. We elected to use our fund balance if it was needed to support the expenditures. And and, you know, we're we're fortunate that 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 was not necessary. But again, a lot of time and effort, as you said, has gone into the management of this plan. Joe, any questions for Michelle?
No, this was, that was a very thorough presentation. I've got no questions.
Bill?
One question, Michelle. Obviously, you're thrilled about the state aid coming in this year. I know we talked about that a lot through the budget process. Has the state issued any guidance going forward for future years? Like, has the state said, well, you know, we're able to, we're able to fund your needs this year and future years, or might be a a decrease in it, or is it just way too early to know?
We've included the, you know, the estimates we have for FY twenty-two through that budget process, but I don't have information about the out-years beyond that. We do have, in case those, in case there are some revenue deficits that materialize on the state side going forward, the American Rescue Plan funding that we're anticipating getting for Hingham can be used for lost revenue, so that's a, that's a source that we could tap into in the out-years, depending on on how the picture looks.
Great. Thank you.
Is there anyone in the public who has a question or wishes to make a comment with respect to the fiscal twenty-one financial update? Okay, I just also want to extend my appreciation and thanks to members of the Forecast Group. School Superintendent Paul Austin, Director of Business Services, John Ferris, School Committee Chair Carrie Nie, School Committee Member Michelle Ayer, Advisory Committee Chair Bob Curley, and Advisory Committee Vice Chair Julie Straley, as well as Tom Mayo, Michelle Montsegur, and Sue Nickerson. The Forecast Group typically meets as needed during the budget process. But again, this year, in light of the financial situation and the extraordinary circumstances, we've actually been meeting on a monthly basis to carefully look over both our revenue and our expenditures. And I think one of the reasons that the town has been able to weather this year financially has been the active engagement and commitment of every member of the Forecast Team. And so our our thanks to all of them. The next item of business on our agenda is the Complete Streets Policy. We are joined by our Town Engineer J.R. Frye, who submitted a Complete Streets Policy draft to the board, and this evening, I I believe J.R. is looking for the board to adopt this as presented. J.R., I'm going to turn it over to you to perhaps give the public an overview of the Complete Streets Policy as well as to answer questions from the board and the public.
Absolutely. Thank you. Thank you, Mary. So the Complete Streets Policy is a program that is promoted by Mastod. And towns which adopt a Complete Streets Policy become eligible for additional money from Mastod to further implement right-of-way improvements, typically right-of-way improvements. So a very broad overview of the Complete Streets Policy. Complete Streets are designed and operated to provide safety and accessibility for all the users of our roadways, trails, and transit systems, including pedestrians, bicyclists, transit riders, motorists, commercial vehicles, freight and emergency vehicles, and for people of all ages and abilities. Complete Streets principles contribute toward the safety, health, economic viability, and quality of life in the community by providing accessible and efficient connections between home, school, work, recreation, and retail destinations, and by improving the pedestrian and vehicular environments throughout communities. So that's the intent of what Complete Streets is meant to do. By adopting this policy, what the town of Hingham would be immediately eligible for is a technical grant from Mastod that would assist us in preparing what's called a Complete Streets Prioritization Plan. And we would recruit a consultant, we would put out an RFQ for a consultant, and the consultant would then prepare for us through a public process where people would be invited to contribute their knowledge and and what they desire to see in terms of improving connections. And from all of that input, both on-the-ground survey and the public process, we would develop a a number of projects that would fit into the Complete Streets Grant Scheme. And then we would prioritize those projects and we would begin submitting grant applications to Mastod for Complete Streets. Each town that has adopted a Complete Streets Policy is eligible for project grants of up to four-hundred thousand dollars annually. So it's a reasonably significant benefit that the town could gain. This is very similar to the Shared Streets Grant, which we, where we were recently awarded a hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars for the purchase and installation of rectangular rapid-flash beacons, and some Complete Streets policies would be exactly in line with that kind of construction program. So it can mean new sidewalks, it can mean paint and redesignation of portions of the right-of-way. And it can also mean adoption of other benefits to for the community.
Thank, thank you, J.R. Joe, maybe we'll ask you to lead off if you have questions for J.R. about the policy. Any comments about the program?
Yes, thank you for the presentation. Am I correct that Hingham has not previously registered for this program before?
That's correct.
But I understand that our our neighboring communities have?
Our neighboring communities and the majority of the twenty-town comparable communities have all adopted Complete Streets policies.
Yep. So I'm just wondering if you know why is the town has not moved on this before?
I I know that other communities have hesitated because there were concerns that the commitment would lead to a strict dedication without consideration of, so a strict dedication of resources without consideration of other priorities by the towns. I've made a conscious effort to write the Complete Streets Policy such that if the town deems that it is not in its best interest to make certain improvements for one reason or another, that the town still retains control and the ability to make it to prioritize for itself where we want to it make these Complete Streets improvements.
Is is there a relationship or interaction between Complete Streets and other aspects of town policy, for example, open space and recreation, harbor plans, you know, various redevelopment aspects? I I'm just trying to get a sense of how all those factors interact with this.
Well, it's certainly complementary. So one of the things that part of the prioritization plan would work through is a review of any existing or any plans that are in progress to identify specific aspects that would be Complete Streets eligible projects within those plans. And then those could be prioritized and more readily adaptable for funding by Mastod. So it's really something that we would utilize in support of other projects. Similarly, when I was in Fall River, we actually had a budget shortfall on a MassWorks project. We very quickly, and this was shortly after we adopted our policy, and we very quickly put in a grant application, a Complete Streets grant application, because the work that we had designed was all Complete Streets eligible. So we were able to supplement the MassWorks funding with this Complete Streets funding in order to make sure that the project was fully completed.
And what would be the responsibilities of the Board of Selectmen under under the policy?
The primary responsibility is the approval of any contracts that are executed in furtherance of the work. So there will be a contract with the state and then a contract with the contractor that completes the work as well. Now, the way that I've written the policy, and this is subject to your approval, the way I've written the policy is most of the day-to-day review of that policy will be handled by the Traffic Committee, and then they report back to the Board of Selectmen on a regular basis, as well as to Town Meeting.
Yeah, so I I saw the delegation to the Traffic Committee. It wasn't clear if that was a limited delegation or not. And in particular, I'm aware that in other towns, the Board of Selectmen have the authority to exempt, to grant exemption to this Complete Streets policy in certain instances, like when costs or impacts might be excessively disproportionate. And it, are those same rights included in what you've proposed?
The exemptions are handled, and it's kind of a detailed process that I laid out. So the way that exemptions end up being handled is that where a so where items come under Chapter ninety? If it is day to day work and it's outside our budget, then it would be a, it would be referred from me back to the traffic committee and to you as a request of exemption. For other elements, it would, so for instance, if there was a, a separate kind of project that was brought up and we got to the point of bidding on the project and we realized that there wasn't funding sufficient to meet all the complete streets goals, then I would write up a memo that would go to the traffic committee and to the Board of Selectmen for approval of the exemptions.
Got it. Has this policy been reviewed by Town Council yet?
Yes, it has. And I sent you an updated draft, actually at the beginning of this meeting with all of his edits incorporated. They, they weren't significant.
Okay, thank you. I've got no other questions.
Bill, questions for J R?
Hey, R. Well, thank you for the work you did on this, J R. Great to see grant money coming in any capacity. Can you just give us a little more detail? Or maybe an example, it can be hypothetical or not, as to what, what this actually is. Yeah, I, I, I followed you along with your initial statement. I'm just trying to figure out what projects could this apply to in Hingham or potential projects?
So the, the types of projects that we, that I think would be prioritized. It's not technically up to me. It's up to the, the traffic committee and to the public at large. But things like the completion of the harbor sidewalking and biking path, connection of sidewalk segments along High Street and New Bridge Street, where there are gaps in the sidewalk network. You know, we, we just got the grant to install R R F Bs at four of our crosswalks. But we'd look to expand that program and add R R F Bs at other frequently used crosswalks, especially crosswalks at 228. Improving pedestrian connectivity between the station street parking lot, the harbor and the downtown commercial district, and making sure people are aware of those connections. And then extension of pedestrian improvements at the limit of the existing 3A scope of work is another piece. So we have, we might have an opportunity utilizing some of this grant funding to continue expanding the complete streets element beyond the existing Route 3A scope.
And, and just to clarify, I kind of follow up on Joe's question. The ultimate decision authority is going to be the board, right? So
Yes.
Okay. So I just want to make sure that any recommendations that come out of the traffic committee or yourself ultimately go to us to, for approval. So we can make sure that it isn't the best, town's best interest. And we don't have a lot of objections from residents who may be impacted by it. Okay, thank you.
Okay. J R, thank you. And my colleagues have asked many of the clarifying questions that I had. I just had one additional, which is whether participation in the complete streets policy will affect the chapter 90 state money that we get towards, you know, towards our roads.
Uh, no, that does not affect the chapter 90 money. So it neither, it doesn't deduct or add to it. It's a separate pot of money.
Excellent. And, and I would just note that, you know, in, in my time on the board, you know, I've received a number of, of requests for, from citizens for sidewalks. And that New Bridge corridor is one that has, has been frequently written about for many years. So as, as you were talking about examples, I, I was very glad to see that one. That's a busy traveled road. There are students that need to walk to bus stops and things. And the fact that you have, you know, you have sort of some what I would call orphan sidewalks. I think that the opportunity, the opportunity to connect some of those things, I think would be appreciated by the residents. And from my perspective, would be a safety enhancement to what is a busy road. Is there anyone in the public who has a question or wishes to make a comment with respect to the complete streets policy? Yes, sir. I'm going to recognize Mr. Buena Gorio. I'm, I'm sure I mispronounced that and I apologize.
No, you nailed it, Mary. Thank you.
Oh, great. Welcome. Give your name and address and direct questions and comments to me, and then I'll probably refer them to J R.
Thank you. Mark Buena Gorio, Ten Cliff Road. I would just like to commend J R for his work on this in the shared streets program. I've sat in some of the traffic committee meetings and he's been great about listening to concerns, as have the rest of the members of the committee. I took a look at the map that Massachusetts has in the complete streets program. 258 towns in the Commonwealth have participated, including every single town around us. The few that haven't are generally very rural towns. And most of the grant money, from what I'm seeing from state's webpage, is going towards safety improvements. Given some of the sadly tragic accidents that we've seen in the town over the past few years, including one recently, I think these are really valuable. Or I should say, really, it's a really valuable opportunity for the town. So I just want to thank J R for his work on that and encourage you to move forward with this program.
Well, thank you. And thank you for attending the meetings. Thank you for the research and thank you for being here tonight. Anyone else? So we have, for consideration for the board, a motion to adopt the complete streets policy as, as affected. Would, Bill or Joe, would one of you like to offer that motion?
I, so actually before doing the motion, I, I have looked at the policy and I think the question that Bill asked as to whether or not the ultimate decision is with the board on these things, I did not see that language in the policy. It looked like it was a complete delegation. And I've seen in other policies where in fact it's, it's made clear that the Board of Selectmen has that authority. So I'm, I am fully in support of this. I want to make sure that the language that's here, in fact, reserves to the board the authority that we need to make sure that implementation is done. So
Mary, if it's acceptable, I'd like to pull out that language and highlight it and then suggest, based on the comments tonight, suggest also some potential adjustments to the language that might fully reflect the board's intent.
Yeah. So Chair, what, um, thank you. So what I might suggest then, and, and I also know we just got comments from council that we haven't had a chance to take a look at. What I, I think, I think what I'm hearing from my colleagues are that we fully support this policy. What I might ask perhaps is that, is that we make those updates and we could, we could bring this back for a vote on our meeting on the 18th. And then, J R, that gives, that gives you the time. And if I could please ask, if, if you could do two things. One, when the language is refined, if you can send it to us and that way we can have individual conversations. And, uh, you know, I think that would be great. And then we'll put it on for a vote on the 18th. But again, I, I, I think we're just refining, but we are in complete agreement that it is in the town's benefit to become part of this. And to Mr. Buena Gorio's point, you know, sometimes Hingham leads and sometimes we follow. It's time for us to follow on this one. You know, if we can do that, we'll take it up for a vote on the 18th.
No problem. My pleasure.
Okay, great. Um, thank you. Thank you, Joe. Next item of business on the agenda is a harbor master update. And we are joined by our harbor master, Ken Corson. Ken had asked the board to make an appointment of an assistant harbor master, which is around the time we did that. We also thought that it might be helpful given, given that we are still in a state of emergency and given that last year there were some COVID related restrictions that were imposed and the change during the year that we might invite Ken in to talk about what to expect on the water this summer. So Ken, I'll turn it over to you.
Great. Thank you, Mary. I appreciate the invitation to be here this evening. I think we're going to see a remarkable kind of return to normal on the harbor this year. We're cautiously optimistic that things are going to continue to improve and we'll see a lot more normalcy. The boats are starting to go in, the harbor master boats are starting to go in. We've issued approximately 80% of the mooring permits for this year. Pump out services will start again at the beginning and they'll be proceeding with normal operations. We won't be seeking pump out just boats that don't have any people on them. We'll continue with normal pump out operations. We'll pump boats that have people on them. We might ask them to give us a little bit of distance, but that will be operational. Moring rentals, we're starting to take reservations for those. Those will be, I'm ready to go for people to start using in the next couple of weeks. We will continue to communicate to the public any changes that might come up throughout the season. We'll use the same forms of communication we've used in the past, the town website, town social media. And we can email our permit holders directly. And we'll also use media sources like The Anchor and the Hingham Journal. The special regulations that were adopted are presently in effect and they're in place until about July 28th. What I'm looking to do is present to the board an updated version of the, the mooring regulations that will then, will, will replace those special regulations so they won't be in effect. And these regulations, we've been working on for well over a year. We had a public hearing just over a year ago done on Zoom where we entertained these to the public for well over two hours. It was about three hours. And we entertained lots, lots of questions. We've done a lot of research, looked at the different concerns people had, talked with the engineering, talked with legal counsel on various things. And we're looking to present them to the board when it's appropriate this spring for the board to, to review them, make sure that they feel comfortable them being put in place. And we'd like to have them adopted for, for the summer. That along with a new mooring plan for World's End that we, that we've also been vetting with the public and have presented to the board once before, but we'd like to get that mooring plan to possibly adopted also.
Great. Ken, you may, you may have covered this and I apologize if I missed it, but I recall that last summer, there were restrictions on vessels mooring up in World's, in World's End, both on town moorings and I believe just rafting up. Where, where does that stand?
So right now, with the special regulations, up to three boats are allowed to raft on a moor. That's what the present regulation is.
Okay. And then what about boats that are anchoring?
Yep. So boats that are anchor aren't able to ra, able to raft. That's not in the special regulations. That's just in our general regulations. When we adopt, if we adopt the World's End mooring plan, that allows about 13 new moorings to go into World's End. So we'll be increasing access to World's End by, you know, with the 13 moorings. And if we allow to them to raft a certain number of boats, we'll be increasing access, access to the mooring field. But we're still going to limit the amount of anchoring that goes on to some degree because that's the challenging part. With, with moorings, we can have them spaced somewhat efficiently apart and we can have estimate numbers of boats that these moorings can hold. But when anchoring takes place, you know, the, the average boater has a challenge of deciding where to put that anchor and how close to another boat they should be. And we, that's where we really have challenges with the vast amount of anchoring that we have. So we'll, we'll have some, some restrictions on that. But we're, we're finalizing these and getting them ready for the board to review.
Thank you. Joe, any questions for Ken about what to expect on the water this summer?
I'm expecting a lot of sun and fun on the water. Hopefully you're, you're going to arrange for that. I, I remember when this came up last year, there were a number of comments I think we received from residents from other communities about what the Hingham regulations and how, how they were going to, how those regulations were going to affect other residents from other towns. Have you had those sorts of conversations yet this year?
With, with the boaters having again, you mean?
Yes.
We have not had those conversations again this year with the boaters. We, we listened to all their conversations last year and throughout the summer. We've also listened to a lot of the local boaters, the people that boat from within town that have mooring permits. And we've taken their concerns and requests into consideration also. I think one of the challenges we have is, um, you know, Hingham has, has some great, is a great boating destination. And we have people that come from, from all over and we encourage that. But it's important that we also make sure that the people that, that boat from Hingham have the ability to, to stay local and enjoy their own waterways here. And when I say stay local, I'm not talking about anything that has to do with a residency requirement. If you were able to anchor in World's End, because you had a Hingham mooring permit, that doesn't mean that you're a resident. People have Hingham mooring permits from, from all over the Commonwealth.
Right.
And, and that would allow them to, to then stay local and go over there, anchor and boat if they don't have a, a mooring. We will have, right now we have four transient moorings over there. We're looking to increase with these 13 new moorings to increase the number of transients. Possibly by another four or six moorings. We're still working on exactly what that number would be. But that will increase the ability of people from out of town to come in and, and enjoy that area.
Great. I got no, no other questions. Thank you.
Great. Uh, Bill, any questions for Ken?
Yeah, Ken, how many assistant harbor masters do you have? Is it six?
Right now, I think we're at about 11. We have a couple that might not be returning. And we're reappointing one this year right now. And then you will be getting some more information from me on potential seven new hires.
Great, thank you.
Great. Um, I, I don't think I have any further questions. Is there anyone in the public who has a question or wishes to make a comment with respect to what to expect on the water this summer? Okay, so Ken does have an appointment that he's requesting. Ken, since we have the benefit of your being here, could you perhaps just introduce Mr. Sullivan? Tell a little bit of his background before the board takes, takes this vote?
Sure. Um, so Bobby Sullivan, he grew up here in town. He went to Hingham High School. He went to Holy Cross. He now works in, in environmental firm, local environmental firm, doing environmental work. He's been with the town as an assistant harbor master for the last three years. He has a lot of knowledge of the waterways, how to get around. He's very personable. He's kind. He's caring. And he does a great job of interacting with boaters and assisting them with their daily needs on the water.
Thank you. Joe or Bill, would you like to make a motion on the appointment of Mr. Sullivan?
I would make a motion to appoint Robert Sullivan as a part-time assistant harbor master for a three-year term ending June 30th, 2024.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, Joe?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
Ken, thank you. And thank you for coming in to, you know, talk about what's going to happen. Hopefully, as you said, this summer on the water will feel a little bit more typical. You know, one thing that I, I think you did a very good job at last year and I would encourage you to continue to do that is through the website and your ability to notify permit holders to, to continue to communicate to people about any changing restrictions. Obviously, much of what we do hinges on the direction of the state and other things. And, uh, you know, I, I do think that as the summer progresses, there will be some new information or some new news. And I would just encourage you to provide the same excellent communication that you did last summer because it was very helpful to all the boaters.
Most certainly, we will do that.
Terrific. Thanks for being here tonight.
Thank you.
Okay, the next item of business on the agenda is the Town Administrator Annual Performance Review. You know, in, in municipal government, you know, people who have joined our meetings, you'll see that we, we interview people in public meetings. We do that with police officers. We do that with, you know, with our, with our leadership. And we also, according to certain statutes and things, we are required each year to provide an annual performance review for our town administrators. So, you know, performance reviews can always be a little, uh, you know, sometimes they're a little uncomfortable. They're a little awkward. Tom, I can't imagine what it's like to receive a performance review during a public meeting where it's captured on local media and then replayed and replayed. But anyway.
17 years in the business, you get, you get used to it.
I, I don't know. This strikes me as one of those things that maybe I kind of don't totally get used to all of it. But I, I would just say, all kidding aside for members of the public, as part of the employment agreement that the town administrator has with the board, we are required to conduct a performance evaluation. And as part- And as part of that, we received input. From three, three of our department heads. We also received input from the Chair of the Advisory Committee. Who our town administrator interacts with quite a bit. And, you know, we as a Board of Selectmen, we take all of our personnel responsibilities quite seriously, including this one. I think I'm I'm going to lead off. The the format for this is that each of us will have an opportunity to provide some comments. I actually put something together in writing because I that's just an easier way, so. If if you'll allow me, I'm going to, I'm I'm going to just. Read a couple of things and and my feedback, I I want to first speak to some of Tom's accomplishments during this year. I I want to speak to sort of some general obliga- general observations that I've had. And I want to speak to a couple areas of focus for the future. In terms of accomplishments, I would just point out that under Tom's leadership. The town was able to reimagine services programs. And public meetings and engage the public while keeping our citizens and our employees safe during the pandemic. Tom established a restaurant reopening group that was so instrumental to helping our local businesses. We opened a COVID nineteen testing facility. We did, we did open COVID back COVID nineteen vaccine vaccination clinics. That were that were open during the time in which the town had access to vaccines. As people heard earlier, under Tom's leadership, Tom's leadership, the town has worked to secure. To date, two point seven million dollars in CARES Act funding. Eight hundred thousand dollars in FEMA funding for COVID-related expenses. That's funding that, you know, otherwise would have come from all of us at taxpayers. Or that would have resulted in the elimination of services. As people also heard earlier tonight, Tom led the review of the Financial Management Plan. He made sure that we were complying with the commitments we made to town meeting. From my experience being part of that group. Tom really drove us. To a data-driven forecasting process with the use of metrics. And while at times it was a little frustrating to come up with a metric. Tom pushed and challenged us and I would say that the integrity of our plan was higher as a result. And I would just say, you know, Bill and Joe, as you move forward and there's there are questions about our financial picture for next year. I would encourage you to follow Tom's lead. Equally, a data-driven process. As we're talking about things like, for example, an override. I think that that some of the learnings that we had from the Financial Management Plan will come to bear. During this year, Tom hired a water superintendent, a director of procurement. A new IT director. A new assessor and an assistant public work supervisor and. I think people who watch our meetings see the very, very high caliber of talent. That we are so fortunate in this town to have and. Tom has assembled a great team. Other accomplishments, the transition of the water system. In in a community that would be the one and only thing they would do in a given year. We did that while we had several other balls in the air, including reaffirming our triple A bond rating. The Climate Action Planning Task Force, the Wage and Classification Study, the purchase of the Benjamin Lincoln House. We saved, we saved the ferry, we helped eliminate, minimized service cuts to the train. And none of those things would have been possible without Tom. Just in terms of general comments, Tom, I think a couple of things that stand out for me. I think you understand that. This is a very, we are, as citizens, we are very involved in our government. Our town volunteers, we take our responsibility seriously. We come to work, we roll up our sleeves. And as town administrator, you give us the bandwidth to do that and also when appropriate. You kind of let us know if we're if we're drifting out of our lane into somebody else's, but. You know, I I think, for example, the. You know, the the work that that the board has done on inside-town finances. You you let us do that and and we don't take that for granted. I think that you have established relationships with your peers in other communities, which is helpful, given that. We have a number of regional efforts, including Shrek and the water system. And and I would also say that I think you have a great ability to promote teamwork and. As we look at everybody coming back to town hall and reopening town hall in June. I think that's going to be really important with new people that we have and kind of rebuilding that town hall's sense of community. That that I think our employees really appreciate. As I look ahead. My hope on Saturday is that town meeting authorizes the Board of Selectmen budget, which. Gives us the ability to hire a second very needed assistant town administrator and. My hope is that when that happens. You will have more time to spend coaching and developing and mentoring many of our department heads. We have a lot of new people in roles and they would benefit from your guidance. Guidance on on different matters and mentoring. And I think that's going to be really important and and that is one place that really, you know. Bill, Joe and I don't get involved in personnel matters. That's that's not our lane. And I I think that's going to be really important. I think. As we've talked, the town is going to have some big decisions to make about. Our finances and about development in South Hingham and. My hope is that, again, with. Getting everybody back in town hall and and rounding out our team. You will have more time to have dedicated focused time on some of these longer-term issues. In your role. The urgent often crowds out the important. And it's my hope that that there will be less of that as we move forward. But I would say, and and we chatted about this yesterday. I do think that as as we get back in town hall and and. Potentially have a new member of the team. I think it's an opportunity to look at how kind of the work is organized and how things flow. So, for example, if if I get a. You know, a resident, a resident on New Bridge Street says I I want to extend a sidewalk or. Somebody sends a note about something. I I think, I think we've sort of had some loose protocols as far as where that information goes. I think, given the volume of it, we have to tighten that up. And I also think that a lot of things are going directly to you. That could potentially be. Kind of handled by members of your team. When you told me that you get three or four hundred emails in a day. I just, I I I don't know how you can do the job we need you to do. If you have to respond to three or four hundred emails in a day, so. You know, I I see this transition as an opportunity to. To sort of look at how some of that is structured and and to delegate some of that. Because. I think, I I think it's just going to help us continue to be able to accomplish because. I'm also acutely aware of the significant time commitment. That you that you give to this town and. I both appreciate it, but I also don't want you to burn out. And I know that in the pandemic, you've had to really work, you know, superhuman hours. Of which the town is very grateful. But I don't think it's reasonable for the town to expect that level of commitment from you on an ongoing basis. So I I I both thank you for that. And challenge you with. With some of the changes that are going to happen in the next month to. To maybe look at some ways to maybe reorganize some of the work. I'll just close by saying that. Hingham is very fortunate to have a loyal and a committed town administrator. You always do what's best for the town of Hingham. I know I can always count on that in all of your dealings and. I think while I appreciate all of the accomplishments and all of. The things that you bring, your loyalty and your commitment to the town of Hingham. Probably is is the thing that I value the most, so I thank you. Joe, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you. So you you you've covered a lot of ground, Mary. And I I don't want to be repetitive. I've gone over with Tom. My. My evaluation. And. From a, from a higher level. There are a couple qualities that I've identified that are so critical. For my interaction with Tom and for Tom's. Guidance to the town. You've touched on the first one, which is his commitment to the town, which is extraordinary. And. It's, it's what makes everything work, it's what makes a lot of the town work. And it really cannot be underestimated. Second is his work ethic, which is unmatched. And. We are truly blessed to have someone who at who is really that. Committed to the town and who works tirelessly to make sure that the town. Functions and that we all can be successful. A third characteristic that is. Important. I don't see it mentioned in. In sort of the criteria that people objectively look at for when they review. But to me, it's paramount and it's his honesty. His honesty is just. It flows through everything and. It's 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 imperative for someone who has this much authority and responsibility for the town. And fourth. The 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 final characteristic I want to characterize for Tom. Which I also don't see in reviews. In sort of like the standard check the box list. Is that Tom is compassionate. He is compassionate. For the employees of the town, for the residents of the town. For those who who come to the town for for various reasons. And compassion is needed. When you're dealing with situations, dealing not necessarily just with emergency situations, but on a day-to-day basis. And so I really commend him for that. Like you, Mary, I've noticed that three to four hundred emails a day issue that Tom has spoken to me about. Other towns have adopted what they've called a sundown policy. And they tell their town administrator that they have to answer emails and voice messages by the end of the day. Even if only to acknowledge their receipt and to provide an estimated time to respond to the matter. That's a goal. That's a goal that I need to aspire to as 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 well as Tom. But that is, if if there's one one area that I would really stress. It's that responsiveness and ongoing communication that's important to keep. Town government running. But I am. The town is really honored and. Grateful to have you as our town administrator, Tom.
Thank you, Joe.
Yeah, so this kind of kind of sounded a little repetitive, but I think when I talk about your your strengths, Tom. Because of these areas, just. This shine so much. But before I do that, you know, Mary had a really great list there of some of your accomplishments. In terms of my highlights, you know, I wanted to pick out three and, you know, getting the testing facility up and running. Was a huge, huge accomplishment, given everything going on at the time. The the needs of residents, the desire of residents to see a testing site in the in the, you know, within Hingham. And that was, you kind of just worked that really hard and that just came to be at a really stressful time for people, so that was wonderful. Working with Joe on the ferry, saving the ferry, keeping the Green Bush line running was. Fantastic, that that was a serious, serious threat of losing both of those and. Can't thank you enough for all the work you did there with Joe. And as Mary talked about the COVID relief funds. You know, our our it was a tough budget season. This past year, a lot of needs needed to be addressed and that COVID relief money. And how you were able to work that into the budget was excellent. So in terms of, you know, your strengths. Your work ethic is without a doubt second to none. And, you know, I know that you show up to work on Monday and you just, you're going all day long. And then that you that happens all all week. You and I had a conversation this past Saturday, in fact, we had three last Saturday. Working on these contracts and I noted to you how much I appreciated you doing this work on weekends. We've had conversations on late at evening sometimes. And your work ethic is is outstanding. I very much like working with you and your commitment to this town and this community. And. Someone who is so invested in the success of this town. On a lot of levels is is a huge strength and I can't thank you enough for all you do there. And Joe kind of, Joe mentioned your compassion for people and I like your ability to communicate with people. You know, people have told me when they've met with you and they've discussed issues with you. How much they've appreciated it, how much you can relate to people and I think as a manager, that's a huge strength. Joe and Mary talked about communications. I think one of the things you and I have talked about that I'd like to see happen. Is just the restructuring of the town administrator's office. I I the work of the of this, the work that you do and Michelle do, it's become very complex and very demanding. You know, I know we talked about different reporting structures. You know, I I would like to see. The reporting structure broken down more so there's a definitive chain of command. Within the two, hopefully, hopefully two assistant town administrators. So that reporting structures and reporting needs can be worked up to that technical chain. And I think this would free you up more for. Not so much day-to-day, but po- policy implementation, short-term. But also long-term thinking and long-term planning. And I'm hoping that the, with the town meeting vote on Saturday and the resources given in those areas, that's going to free you up. To to be able to do those issues and that will improve communication and also, you know, utilizing. Your administrative assistance more with scheduling and responsive. To emails and things along those lines, so. You know, Tom, thrilled to work with you. I'm so happy to have you part of this team and I can't thank you much for all the work you do.
Tom, is there anything that you want to add?
A lot of things I'd like to add. Thank you all so much for the kind words. I I. The thing that's most important to me that you understand is how much I appreciate my opportunity to work for this town. I I work with. Absolutely, I I smiled, Mary, I think when you said, you know, volunteer, when you started talking about volunteers caring about the town. I started to laugh because, yeah. Like the 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 degree to which volunteers in this town care about their town is unparalleled. And and it's it's. Michelle and I laugh all the time. I am a local government nerd. It the the degree to which volunteers love this town. Is exactly what was intended when when local government models were created. And and I just love that stuff. I mean, democracy at its best is in this is live and well in this town. And and that's fantastic and it's a big part of the reason why it was such a successful. Community and why everything, most things work out really well here. I very much appreciate the kind words, I will say, and I know that these becomes a a routine kind of comment, but. Almost everything you all identified as tasks and achievements this year. You all know, you are you are part of the team, are are accomplished through team effort. I'm not trying to diminish my role, I understand my role, I know what I've what I've done in my role in it, but. I I just have to say that, everybody knows that and everybody says it, but it's it's really true. I am absolutely lucky to have an assistant town administrator working by my side like Michelle Montseger. She is so dedicated to everything we're doing together as a team. That that brings together all the all the things that you three expect of our office and allows us to provide to the community, so. Department heads, employees, on and down the line. I'm just, I'm just very blessed and and lucky to to work for a town like this. Mary, I told you when you 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 were on the board when you hired me, three plus years ago, three and a half, almost four years ago now. I told you then that I meant it and I'll always do it. I'll, I'll, I will always work to endeavor to do what's in the best interest of this community in every decision I make.
Thank you. Yeah. And so hopefully at, at our next meeting in two weeks, as, as part of this process as well, and, and the board voted several weeks ago and announced that we are entering into a new contract with Tom. And it is the board's hope that we can conclude that contract over the next few weeks. So that will sort of be the, the next step in, the next step in the process. So thank you. And I also just want to extend thanks to our human resources director, Lisa Campbell, who helped coordinate this process, as well as to the department heads and the chair of advisory committee for providing feedback, feedback and input into this review process.
And by the way, lest you all think I didn't hear you, I will very much so endeavor to, to accomplish those, the goals that you're setting out for me here in this and other conversations. So I do hear you and I will work on all of that.
Excellent. Okay. Next on the agenda is inside town finances. Michelle, I think you've got a couple. So this is, this is the last, this is the, the final volume, volume 15 of Inside Town Finances. And, you know, Bill and Joe, I'm, I'm not going to be around next year when we start talking about overrides and debt exclusions. So, you know, I gotta kind of throw my two cents in right now. No, all kidding aside, you know, this is, this is language that's going to be, that this is language that's going to be spoken about in Hingham and it's important that all of our citizens have a sense of what all that means. So Michelle, if you could go to the next slide. You know, an override, an override is a permanent increase in the tax levy. And once an override is approved, it becomes the base for the calculation of the future. And as we've talked about proposition two and a half and the levy increasing by two and a half, if we have a million dollar override, the next year that million dollars grows by two and a half percent along with the rest of the levy. An override requires a majority affirmative vote of town meeting, that's 51%. And then it needs a majority yes ballot vote at the following town election. If you could go to the next slide, this is just a history of, this comes from the Department of Revenue. Since 1990, the citizens of Hingham have considered eight overrides. Four have passed, four have failed. Since 1994, the last three have passed. And, and it's, over that time, it's, it's been a total of about $3.2 million. If you could go to the next slide, Michelle. Now with debt exclusion, that's a temporary tax increase. It's used to pay the debt service cost, which is principal and interest on money borrowed to finance a specific project. For example, when we built the Hingham Middle School, the taxpayers voted a debt exclusion. We issued debt in 2015. We typically issue excluded debt with a 20-year term. So in 2035, the middle school will be paid off. We issued excluded debt for the high school renovation and the south school renovation in 2000. Those were paid off last year. A debt exclusion requires a two-thirds affirmative vote for town meeting because anytime we borrow money, it's requires two-thirds. And it also requires a majority yes ballot vote at the following town election. If you could go to the next slide, please, Michelle. So this is a list of municipal debt exclusions since 2000. There have been six of them. A lot of school projects and athletic fields on school premises. And the total of those six debt exclusions is about $89 million. And again, if you look at these projects and you look, for example, the Hingham Middle School, if we wanted to absorb the debt service costs into our operating budget, that's just such a big number. It would require a contraction of services. So what you typically see is the excluded debt is for the larger projects. If you could go to the next slide, Michelle. So what does an override mean? What's the tax impact of that? So the rule of thumb, the rule of thumb right now is that every million dollars in an override amount causes your property tax bill to go up by an additional 1.1%. So for the average assessed value property, which is assessed at $875,000 in this fiscal year, that's $116. If your property is assessed lower than 875, it's a little bit less. What you see in the table down below is the estimated property tax increase for different override amounts. And again, every $1 million adds 1.1%. So for example, let's just say hypothetically next year that the town considers a $3 million override. Under proposition two and a half, taxes would go up by about 2.7%. With a $3 million override, the property tax increase would be about 5.9%. So that's again, just kind of a little bit of a rule of thumb. And this comes from the financial planning model that, that was developed for the advisory committee. And this past year was updated by John Asher, who was very generous with his time in doing that. Michelle, if you could go to the next slide. So with a debt exclusion, the rule of thumb is that a, every $10 million in a debt exclusion would result in an additional 0.9% increase in property taxes in the first year. So again, you see a table below for the average assessed value property. A $10 million debt exclusion would add $95 to the tax bill above and beyond what's allowed under proposition two and a half. A $100 million debt exclusion would add about $950 in the first year to the average assessed value property. And what you see in the table is different debt exclusion amounts. One of the things to remember about, about debt exclusions are that typically we don't issue the debt until the project is completed. So if we think about foster school, for example, we anticipate a special town meeting in the fall of '22 for foster school. If that's authorized, it's going to take about two years to build that school. And during that time, we will borrow money on a short-term basis, like what we saw earlier tonight, with lower interest rates. And when we borrow short-term, we only make interest payments. We don't pay down principal. So we would expect that the tax increase from a debt exclusion would not hit our tax bills until fiscal year '25 because that's when the long-term debt is issued. One of the things that we talked about in the budget process was not just thinking about our operating budget and the potential for an override, but also considering the potential debt exclusions that are on the horizon for the town and the, the, the benefit of trying to maybe space out some of those tax increases so they don't hit, they don't hit the taxpayers all at once. Michelle, if you could go to the next slide. So next question is, okay, this is the assessed value, but you know, what does it look like for my property? On our website, we have a link to the financial planning model that was updated this past year. And functionality has been built into that model to allow people to insert their own property's assessed value. And what this model allows you to do, as we saw earlier this year, is to input various excluded debt and override amounts to come up with specific values. Joe and Bill, one other thing that we worked on that Kate Richardson helped us with and, and that is, it's, it's mothballed right now, but it is ready to go, is we actually created an override calculator. And this override calculator, we can put it on the town website if the town decides to go forward with an override next year. And what a resident is able to do is to type in a property address and a little box will pop up to show the impact of an override on the tax bill. It's a much simpler version of the model that you see here on the screen. And it's, it's a little bit easier to use. When we thought there was a possibility that we might be considering an override this year, we wanted it to be ready to go. And the good news is it's ready to go for when the town needs it. And I think that as, as the town is considering overrides and debt exclusions, and one important part of that decision is what is the impact on property taxes? So I think that we have some helpful tools, both a tool like the financial planning model, which I think is, is particularly helpful for the policy boards. And then also a calculator that is probably a, a more helpful and a user-friendly tool for our residents. So that is a little bit about debt exclusions and overrides. We'll have a one-pager up on the website tomorrow that covers some of this content. Joe or Bill, I don't know if either of you have any questions or comments.
Comment is, this is, you know, very thorough presentation. So thorough, I've got no questions.
I'm with Joe, no questions.
Hey. Close your books and take out your pencils. It's time for the test. No.
That's what, what's we're looking for.
That's, that's very scary to hear.
Kidding. Next item of business on the agenda is appointments. We have police prosecutor appointments and liquor enforcement officer appointments. Tom, could you just explain for the benefit of the public the purpose of, of the appointments that, that we're being asked to make? And, and I do see that the chief is on as well.
So the chief is on here and Mary, I would prefer if we, if you don't mind having him walk through the difference between, you know, the different patrol or, or appointment needs.
Sure. Chief Jones, welcome. If, if you could just explain the purpose of the police prosecutor appointments and then the liquor enforcement officers.
Good evening. Sure. So the police prosecutors are full-time police officers from neighboring communities that work at the courthouse in Hingham in the town. And the purpose behind appointing them as special officers with the town is that, so they can, since they are working full-time at the courthouse, that they can act as a law enforcement officer if the need arises while at the courthouse, in the event that our prosecutor is, is tied up in a courtroom or a hearing or something like that. The liquor enforcement designation is for the detectives that work for the department. And that is so that they can conduct the liquor establishment inspections and do the annual report back to the board.
Joe or Bill, any questions for the chief on any of these appointments?
Yeah. So when we appoint the police prosecutor appointments for neighboring towns, my assumption is that has no fiscal impact on the town of Hingham. Is that correct?
That is correct. That, that they're only, they, they are already full-time police officers paid for by other municipalities. And the only purpose of them being appointed as special officers, so they can act as a police officer while they're serving at the courthouse in Hingham.
Right. So we're granting them authority, but we're not in, incurring any fiscal responsibility.
That's correct. They're paid by their respective municipalities.
Thank you. No other questions.
Bill, any questions for Chief Jones?
No, I, I just actually had the same question Joe had. I spoke with the chief offline about it. So thank you.
Members of the public, any questions about the appointments? Seeing none, I'd accept motions for both.
I guess you got, go ahead, Bill, if you want to. This is your night. Come on.
I'm gonna have you do it because I lost my vote list on, on my email here. So I'm trying to get it back up. I'm trying to get it back up in my vote list.
Okay. So I, I moved to appoint the following police prosecutors and backups as special police officers for the town of Hingham for a one-year term ending April 30, 2022. From Hanover Police Department, Sergeant Daniel Salvucci and Sergeant Timothy Kane, Hall Police Department Officer Michael Flaherty, Detective Andrew Riley, Norwell Police Department Sergeant William Pastoreus, Rockland Police Department Officer Sean Brundage, Officer Jeffrey Durenzo and Officer Joseph Zalinski, Situit Police Department Sergeant Kenneth Bates, Sergeant James Bowman and Detective Owen Kirkbride.
Second. Any further discussion? All those in favor, Joe?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
And then I can just move on for the liquor enforcement. I moved to appoint the following detectives as agents of the Board of Selectmen to enforce the laws of the Liquor Control Act and the Alcohol Beverages Control Commission, A B C C Regulations for All Licensed Liquor Establishments in the Town of Hingham for a term ending April 30, 2022. Detective Sergeant Phil Emmett, Detective Heather Hermita and Detective Michael Jervasi.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, Joe?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
Great. Thank you. Chief Jones, thanks very much for being here tonight and for the explanation.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Next item of business is the COVID-19 update.
Sure. Thank you, Mary. So COVID-19 update for today, May 4th. As of yesterday, confirmed 19 cases in Massachusetts totaled 648,249. With the seven-day average of new COVID-19 cases in the state have, has been trending downward since early April. According to, according to the Public Health Data from the Mass DPH released last week, the town's designation remains yellow yet again, indicating a medium risk of spread in the community. There have been 72 new cases of COVID-19 in Hingham over the past 14 days and a total of 1,929 cases in Hingham since the start of the pandemic. The early, the average daily incidence rate for the town was 21.4 per 100,000 residents. And our percent positivity rate was 2.43% for the previous 14 days. Regarding vaccine rollout, the general public ages 16 and above became eligible to receive the COVID-19 vaccine in Massachusetts as of Monday, April 19. According to the DPH's Daily COVID-19 Vaccine Report, over 2.6 million people in Massachusetts have been fully vaccinated as of yesterday. As of April 29th, approximately 42% of Hingham residents have been fully vaccinated, up from 36% last week. So that's a nice 6% jump. Tomorrow, a team of Hingham Health and Fire Department staff will administer the Johnson &amp; Johnson COVID-19 vaccine to seven homebound residents. The state's homebound vaccination program is another resource for individuals who may require in-home vaccinations because they are unable to leave their home to get to a vaccination site, even with assistance. Individuals can contact the Homebound Vaccination Central Intake Line at 833-983-0485 to schedule in, in, in-home vaccination through the, through the state. Regarding reopening guidance, as of last Friday, April 30th, the governor relaxed the face coverings order for some outdoor settings. In particular, face coverings will be required outside in public when it is not possible to socially distance and at other times when they are required by sector-specific guidance. However, please note that face coverings will continue to be required at all times, whether held indoors or outdoors and whether held in a public space or private home, except for when eating or drinking. In line with this guidance, masks are still required at annual town meeting on Saturday. Face coverings will still be required at all times in indoor public places. At smaller gatherings in private homes, face coverings are recommended but not required. Additional changes will go into effect on Monday, May 10th, impacting large venues like stadiums and arenas, amusements, amusement in theme parks, road races, sports tournaments and indoor singing. Changes potentially going into effect on Saturday, May 29th may increase the gathering limits to 200 people indoors and 250 people outdoors for event venues, public settings and private settings. Public settings and private settings. As we reported last week, subject to the public health and vaccination data, the state may lift all industry restrictions as of August 1st. Thank you.
Thank you. Joe, any questions for Tom?
No questions.
Bill?
I do have one question. Tom, I was seeing today on the news. The governor and some other officials talking about closing some sites, and it reminded me about our contract with the testing site on Cushing Street. And I recall that if there are a certain number of tests being made, that we're on the hook for quite a bit of money. Have you checked in with Mr. Stone to see where we are with that? I mean, the number is still being hit in terms of. Not costing the town money, or is it dropped off? I was kind of curious about that.
Yeah, it's a great question, Bill. So our numbers have dropped off significantly. Michelle and I, as a matter of fact, were emailing about that earlier this week. We'll be talking about it tomorrow and Thursday. The last I saw on a on a count from last week was approximately 50 tests per day. We had been up over 200 during the during the peaks, if that gives it some some scope. The problem we run into is if if we drop it, if we. So we've, we've contracted the service from from six days a week to four a couple of months or so ago. To contract it much further may necessarily close it just because the employees need to work, so. And then we then we lose the opportunity for those 50 people to be able to get their their testing as as conveniently as they're used to. So we have to, we have to walk through that. Michelle and I will look at the numbers a little bit closer and. And reach out to the three of you for your thoughts as we as we do that. But it's, it's, I think it might be time, Bill, to start thinking about exactly that.
Yeah, only reason why I bring it up is that, I mean, it's wonderful to have it, as you said, 50 people a day, so it's the benefit of it. But I know that if we're not hitting a certain threshold.
Right.
The town is paying the contractor, so I. Just a concern, but I'm glad you're on it. Thank you for, thank you for your.
And the other piece of it, Bill, that that goes into this, right, is one of the things you just heard me say is for like the ninth week in a row. Or whatever it is, Michelle, seven weeks, whatever it is, we're yellow again. We're still a medium risk in the community. And that testing facility is a big part of the public health answer to to high, high transmission rates. So we're kind of trying to weigh all of these, all of these matters.
Okay.
Yep.
Thomas, it. If the town incurs a cost, is that eligible for CARES Act reimbursement?
It is.
Okay. So I I mean, and it's still, I I agree with Bill. But I I just want to make sure that to the citizens who know that. If if we are keeping this open and there is a cost to the town, we do have CARES Act money remaining, so we're not. We're not going to need to cut other town services in order to keep that open.
The the only thing I would say is that it's remaining now. We are continuing to incur costs that are eligible. Both on the school side and to some extent on the town side, so. Always better to control costs than otherwise. But you're absolutely right, Mary. They're, they are eligible to the extent there's money available.
Yep. Tom, I had a similar. A similar line of questioning, which is given, you know, given that Massachusetts is closing. Is starting to sort of wind down some of their large testing facilities. Do we have any sense of whether at a certain point, Hingham will be asked to reopen its. Its vaccine clinic or to engage in vaccinations beyond what we're doing with with homebound residents?
Very opportune or well-timed question. That was the topic of our Incident Management Team's Command Group Meeting this afternoon. When we were speaking with our executive health officer, Susan Sonny, today. One of the things that that we were talking about was, you know, the the potential for. For the state as they close those vaccination clinics to reach back out to the communities that are capable of doing it. The state has been reluctant, all I can say to date, the state has been reluctant to to have the towns take on that responsibility for whatever reason. That's how, that was the route that they took. I don't know if they will change that now that vaccines are more are more readily available than they had been. Frankly, I I think I think I would, I would welcome that. I think our command group would welcome that. I think it would be efficient and effective for our residents. But. You know, I guess we'll see. We have very little control over the, over how the state. You know, chooses to go about their vaccination program.
Sure. Thank you. Any member of the public have a question or comment with respect to the COVID-19 update? Tom, thank you. Public comment on items not on the agenda? Okay, town administrator and selectman reports, Michelle.
There's a quick one tonight. I just wanted to remind everyone that. The applications for the new senior means tested tax exemption are now available on our assessing website. There's a link on the left side to it, so the website goes over the eligibility requirements. You can download the application and those are due back on September 1st, 2021.
Thank you. Tom?
Yeah, just also a quick one. So we all have heard in the recent weeks about the the appointments at the at the police department. I wanted to let everyone know we are also moving in that direction over at the fire department. You heard tonight, the retirement of Deputy Bill Powers. We are interviewing now for that for that role. And I also wanted to announce the. The promotion of former lieutenant, now current captain, Colby Wilcox into his new role. And wanted to welcome him into the leadership role or. Of the fire department, and and I look forward to working with him, as I know the chief does as well. So. Welcome, Colby, and we're look forward to continuing our relationship and working together.
Thank you. Bill, anything to report tonight?
I looked at the weather report tonight, and there's a 50% chance of rain on Saturday. Everybody be ready. We'll see what happens.
I was going with the 30 that I wrote.
Right in the middle, so we'll see how it develops, but bring your.
I got the strong sense from the moderator that, you know, if if. If you'd sit, if you'd sit at Gillette or whatever football stadium of choice, and you're willing to sit through that weather, that. The same was true for town meeting. He put it more eloquently than that, but I. I I got, I I sense some determination to conduct the meeting.
Agreed.
Yeah. Joe?
Yes, I just a brief announcement. At the last meeting, I. Noted that the MBTA is restoring service on the ferry. The Hingham Direct Line to Boston is being restored effective May 22nd. As is service to Logan Airport through Hull. Hingham Hull Weekend Service is scheduled also for May 22nd, although it really won't begin until Memorial Day. The reason being that Boston Harbor City Cruises that runs the service, they need help. They need people to be working. They had laid off a number of people. They're now rehiring, and they are looking for workers. Specifically, they are looking for deckhands for the boats. They're holding a job fair on May 13th. So if you know folks who may be interested in working for Boston Harbor City Cruises. To help the the ferry run again, you should contact Boston Harbor City Cruises, or you can contact me, and I can direct you to the right person there.
Thank you. I have two things. Yesterday, I received a notice from the MSBA. Notifying the town that the MSBA has approved the. The town selection of the owner's project manager for Foster Elementary School. The important thing for the community to know is that the MSBA has certain milestones that the town needs to achieve. In order to keep advancing the project. This is a big one. And this is an important one, and this again is is an indication of the MSBA's support. And, you know, right now, again, the building committee is meeting. There are a lot of things that are going on. Some of them are going on from staff to staff, but that is an important milestone that tells us that this project is still very much. Moving ahead. The other thing, and Michelle is going to help me with this, but. You, people may recall that a few weeks ago, I mentioned that members of the town had participated in an eighth-grade civics project. There were different eighth-grade classes that had the opportunity to meet with town engineer J.R. Frye. Superintendent Austin, Assistant Superintendent Laboue, members of the school committee, myself. And each class had to adopt a top, a topic or a project around Hingham. So one class is looking at. Looking at potentially helping the food pantry to establish a website. Another, another group is looking at, actually, they're looking at sidewalks. Another group and another group has been very interested in the Climate Action Plan. And yesterday I received a video and it's, I'm doing it as part of Selectman Report. But this is a shameless plug for going to town meeting and voting on the warrant article to establish a Climate Action Committee. And what I would just point out is that, all joking aside. This is a matter of great public interest for many of our citizens, including some of our youngest. So this is just a one-minute video, but I want you to see what some of our eighth graders are doing, which is something that is funded through the Hingham Education Foundation. It's a wonderful program. And to see the level of interest in some of the things that we talk about on Tuesday nights.
Can you guys hear it okay?
No.
No.
See if I can turn it up all the way.
No volume.
Really? I don't know how else to get it through the system.
Okay, Michelle, why don't you just sort of, maybe if you could just sort of let that play. What you're going to see is five or six members of Ms. Ms. Driscoll's eighth-grade civics class. Talking about. Climate action, talking about the importance of a climate action plan. And this is a video that is available on YouTube. That members of this class and families are using to promote and encourage people to come to town meeting. This is an example of the kind of civic engagement that is so important in Hingham. And we are very grateful to the eighth-grade class. We are grateful to this class for what they're doing. And. As they say, Hingham needs a climate action plan, and again, just, you know, want to thank everybody for their interest. I would remind people before closing the meeting that town meeting is scheduled for this Saturday at 2 o'clock at the Hingham High School Fields. Check-in will be open at 12:30. Please come prepared for the elements to the extent that the. Meeting may be postponed due to weather. We will make that determination on Friday, and we will use various methods to get the word out. We, our, our hope is to be able to open and conduct the important business of the town on Saturday, May 8th. But we do have have rain dates if necessary. Our board's next meeting will be two weeks from tonight, which will be May 20, excuse me, May 18th. So with that, I would take a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, Joe?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
Mary?